Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the month of March of 2019. The Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session from 6:45 to 7:00 p.m. this evening to discuss a number of personnel-related matters. I would now ask our Township Manager and Secretary to please call a roll.
Certainly. Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. Oliva?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. McGarrity?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
And Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Larry. Would all please rise and join our Chief of Police, John Viola, in the Pledge of Alleges?
Pledge of Alleges. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the glory of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is Proclamations. We were going to give a proclamation to Kathleen Patricia Riley, a centenarian, who celebrated her 100th birthday in February, and I got an email this afternoon from her son and said that because a number of her relatives could not attend, that they requested that we postpone the proclamation presentation until our April 8th meeting. And obviously, anything to accommodate someone that can reach the age of 100. So, second proclamation this evening is to Richard "Doc" Dockerty, and I would ask our Seventh Ward Commissioner and Chair of the Public Works Committee, Jim McGarrity, to join me in this presentation.
Doc, can you stand?
I know that anyone that knows Doc well knows that he would much prefer to be working with one of his crew members filling a pothole than standing right here.
That's right.
There's no doubt. Is that true?
That's true.
So, Doc has been with us for over 35 years, last nine years as our Public Works Director, overseeing our second-largest piece of the budget, $15 million, second only to the Police Department. And he's been a great steward and a great leader of a very efficient and well-run team. So, we are indebted gratitude to Doc for all his work and efforts over the last 35 years. I've asked Commissioner McGarrity, who is the Seventh Ward Commissioner, who's in his seventh term and his 28th year as a Commissioner, and also Chair of the Public Works Committee of the Board of Commissioners for probably 25 of the last 28 years, to present this proclamation to Doc Dockerty.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have to make sure I do this right. My wife's right here watching me, and I've got Terry over here watching me. So, whereas the Board of -- oh, let me just say, my fellow Commissioners, every one of them behind me, all love Doc, we're all going to miss Doc. And I'm speaking not just for myself, but for the entire Board and past Commissioners.
Fair.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, wish to recognize Richard Dockerty upon his retirement from the Township of Haverford. Whereas Richard Dockerty, known to all of us as Doc, became employed by Haverford Township in October 1983 as a vehicle maintenance mechanic. At that time, there were approximately 150 vehicles that required continual repair. And whereas Doc worked his way up to the position of the Public Works Directors in 2010, and currently has an operating Public Works Director budget of $15,668,889. The Township Fleet currently has 193 vehicles. Doc is responsible for sanitation, highway, sewers, tree, and vehicle maintenance department, while attending meetings with Township Commissioners, major utility companies, and residents. And whereas Doc always 24/7, with Haverford Township is often awakened in the middle of the night for sewer backups, accidents, downed trees, and help his department, believe it or not, plow snow. He enjoys going to fine restaurants, the movies, vacationings, at bed and breakfast with his wife, Terry. Doc also is an award-winning racecar driver. And whereas, on a personal level, Doc is a loyal employee, as well as a devoted son, a supportive husband, father, and grandfather, a true gentleman, unselfish to the cause of his being. "What do you need?" And Doc's answer was, "You got it," are Doc's favorite lines. These words exemplify the man Richard Dockerty is and the kind of devoted service he has provided Haverford Township during his past 36 years. Now, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford that Richard "Doc" Dockerty will leave beautiful memories in the hearts of our Haverford Township family, and he is part of the family, and our blessings go with you as you enter into a well-deserved retirement. Proclaimed this 11th day of March 2019, the Township of Haverford, Andy Lewis, President, James E. McGarrity, Chair of Public Works, and the entire Board of Commissioners, and all of the employees of Haverford Township, and especially Public Works employees. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing real quick, and I learned a long time ago that a boss is only as good as the men that work for him. Those guys back there, I want you to stand up. That's who deserves a round of applause. These are the guys that are on call. These are the guys that are on call 24/7, and they have never let me down. They go to the end of the earth for me. And that's what makes a good boss, the people that are under them. And I got the best. I would put this crew against anybody else. Thank you all very much.
The next proclamation is to Larry Gentile, and I'd ask Larry to join us, as well as the former Presidents. So, like Doc, Larry doesn't enjoy the limelight, to say the least. I think if he had to have his pick, he'd rather be meeting with the auditors. Is that true?
We'll see how we make out tonight.
Well, Larry's been at roles with the Township over the last 40 years, and has been Township Manager since acting Township Manager since 2007, and he became Township Manager in 2008. And he's overseen a $45 million budget, which is a very significant operation, and very frugally, I might add. He's the only one I know that will lock a refrigerator. Literally lock the refrigerator. So, we're indebted to Larry for his stewardship over the Township resources, all of us as taxpayers. I thought it would be appropriate for all of the former Presidents who had the privilege of working with Larry over the years, including the former President from First Ward, Steve D'Amelio, who served from 2005 to 2007, our former President and Ninth Ward Commissioner, Bill Wexler, who served from 2008 to 2012, and again in 2018, Commissioner from the Second Ward, Mario Oliva, who served as President from 2013 to 2015, and former Commissioner Chris Connell from the Eighth Ward, who served as President from 2016 to 2017. And then there's me, low man on the totem pole. I've only had the privilege of working with Larry for two months. But so I'd like to restart and then have others join in presenting this proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware Commonwealth of Pennsylvania wish to recognize and honor Lawrence J. Gentile Jr.
Whereas Haverford Township was privileged to initially employ Larry Gentile in 1979 as a paramedic within the Township's Pilot Advanced Life Support Program. In 1981, the program became a joint venture with the Haverford Community Hospital, where Larry served as Director of Paramedics. In 2002, the paramedic program returned as a Township-managed program. During this period, many notable events occurred, including the first 12-lead ECG transmission from the field to a hospital on the East Coast, as well as the establishment of paramedics fully integrated into a municipal SWAT team. Larry remained in the EMS Director's position, earned his bachelor's degree from Newen University, and was promoted to Assistant Township Manager in 2006. Larry, in 2007, became Acting Township Manager, and 2008 was promoted to Township Manager, as well as Township Emergency Manager Coordinator, and...
Whereas during his tenure, Larry has worked with five Presidents of the Board of Commissioners, and currently oversees 232 civilian personnel and 69 non-civilian personnel, with an operating budget of $44,919,379, a population of 49,000 residents, and 132 miles of Township, and 33.7 miles of state roads. He oversaw emergency operations through numerous weather events, including four major hurricanes and nine blizzards, as well as three nursing home evacuations. Larry's oversight included emergency operations for the 2013 U.S. Open at Marion.
Whereas during the above-time periods, Larry also served as Flight Paramedic for a combined 30 years with Honeman University Medevac Helicopter and the University of Pennsylvania Penn Star Helicopter. He was selected to function as a Tactical Paramedic for the Federal Bureau of Investigation SWAT Team, where he served for 11 years, and...
My "whereas's" are a little rusty, but I'll get them. Whereas, Larry married his high school sweetheart Judy shortly after their graduation. Together, they raised a daughter and a son. Today, Larry and Judy devote much of their time with their families spoiling their four granddaughters. As an outdoorsman, Larry spent downtime unwinding on tranquil lakes, fishing, and in the peaceful woods, gaming. Now, on his retirement, he can return to the passion of the outdoors with his family and his friends alike, reminiscing on the past and teaching the next generation the skills of nature.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners and the Township Residents wish to thank Larry Gentile for his courageous spirit, leadership, and the many worthwhile initiatives which were established under his leadership that proved to be winners for all residents and visitors. Proclaimed this 11th day of March 2019, Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, signed by Stephen D'Amelio, President, former President, William Wexler, former President, Mario Oliva, former President, Chris Connell, former President, and myself, and obviously with the support of the entire Board. So, congratulations, Larry.
I'll be brief. I know you've made a few...
Picture with proclamation? Yeah. Sure.
You're in the middle, Lex. Always. He's always in the middle.
Thank you.
I'll just say a few words. Thank you very much for the kind words, and I sincerely appreciate it. As you said, I got an early start here, just as a paramedic. I've been blessed. As Doc said, you can't say it any better. You're truly only as good as the people who work for you, and I've been blessed to have so many good people within the ranks and the senior leadership that actually made me look good. You know, over the years, as I learned, the Board has supported me, and to give me an opportunity to learn a job and be successful. And if it wasn't for the support of the staff and the elected officials to be able to do the things that we do to provide a better service and to make Haverford Township a better place to live for the community, without their support, none of that would happen. And it's been, we've been blessed. I know when I go home at the end of the month, when I'm all done, we've made Haverford Township a better place. It's incredible what this Board and past members of the Board, Mrs. Hall, I know Chris is here, Tom Broito, Mr. Trumbull, and Mr. Hyman, there are all the Commissioners I worked under, they all supported anything that unique, new Brian programs, all the things that we wanted to do to change the Township. So, that has made my job easy. And you know, during the years as a manager, sometimes you need to make very unpopular decisions, and you know, change doesn't come easy. And from the fire companies to the Police Department to Public Works, everybody's supported me regardless how difficult those decisions were at some times. So, I won't forget yous. It's not goodbye, it's just see you later.
Can you give us your cellphone number?
No. In 60 days. By that time, you'll forget about me. But thank you all. Appreciate it.
It'll take a few minutes to take a few pictures. We have two appointments to consider. One is the position of Acting Township Manager, and the second is the position of Acting Public Works Director. And the third action to be taken tonight is to temporarily allow the Acting Township Manager and the Assistant Township Manager to manage the affairs of the Township and to make disbursements until a Township Manager is in place. So, I would now entertain a motion for 3A.
Mr. Lewis?
Set Mr. Wexler.
Make a motion to appoint Amy Cuthbertson, CPA, Assistant Township Manager, as Acting Township Manager effective April 1st, 2019.
Seconded by Mr. Hart.
By Mr. Wexler, seconded by Mr. Hart. Is there any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, absolutely.
We're in very good hands.
Second, 3A, a motion to appoint an acting...
A motion to appoint Township Manager, appointment of Daniel Marianni, Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent, as Acting Public Works Director effective April 1st, 2019.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Come around, just, cameras, just state your name.
Dan Marianni, Acting Public Works Director. Excuse me. I just wanted to thank the Board for the opportunity, taking on this new role. As Commissioner Lewis said, it's a trying job 24 hours a day. Great group of guys, looking forward to it, accept the challenge. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Dave.
You can always tell they work in...
Congratulations, Amy.
Amy.
Now, entertain a motion for 3C.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we temporarily allow the Acting Township Manager and Assistant Township Manager to assist all, I'm sorry, to sign all checks for disbursement until the permanent Township Manager is appointed.
Second?
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Agenda item number four is Commissioner Committee Updates. Are there any Commissioner Committee Updates?
I think, you want to give, want to come up, you want us to come up and do this real fast?
Yeah, I just want one other thing first. As a, it's not really a committee update, but considering how many calls I've already received, and I know my colleagues have, at least today, we've started to receive notices from a company called Tyler Technologies, which are the notices about the reassessment. Tyler Technologies, they'll send out a letter that indicates on the top Tyler Technologies with the county seal. That is the proper company who is performing the reassessment process for Delaware County. So, you should read those letters. If there's information that is not accurate, please make certain that you correct it. There's a whole process listed there. But if you receive a letter from Tyler Technologies, that is valid. They are the company performing the work, so you can feel comfortable with that. It should be a letter, not phone calls, no one at your door, a letter addressed that has all of the relevant homeowner information on it. So, I just wanted to, sort of a public announcement.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Are there any Commissioner Committee Updates? Commissioner D'Amelio?
Well, I mean, do we want to give the update for our meeting with the state representatives and the state senator on the 476 West Chester Pike corridor?
I think it makes sense to do it now.
Do you want to do it under business?
Other business?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Want to go up here for...
Let's do it under other business, if you don't mind. Let's do it under other business.
Other business?
Other business, yeah.
Okay, no problem.
That's okay. Are there any Commissioner Committee Updates?
One brief. The Property Committee met last week to address issues relating to the Township, the former Township building and the Brookline School following the vote to accept acquisition from the Township. We are doing some preliminary investigation in terms of evaluating the Township building property, including getting an estimate of its value, and some preliminary information to see if there is a feasibility of even considering the library at the Brookline site, but it's all preliminary. Once we have more information, I'll report back.
Now, thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Any other Commissioner Committee Updates? Item number five on the agenda, Township Auditor Update. I understand Ross Anderson is not feeling well, and that Commissioner Holmes will, you have a joke?
Yeah, I'm happy to fill in, I do. So, first and foremost, I can report that Mr. Anderson went through all, the entire check register and the warrants that we will be considering for approval tonight. Any questions that he had were answered to his satisfaction by our Township staff, in particular by Finance Director Cuthbert, and Acting Township Manager Cuthbertson. And he did ask that some invoices be postponed till next month, that he could examine them more closely, and that request was complied with. And with the news of Bryce Harper arriving in Philadelphia, it has answered the age-old question, just how much money do you have to pay someone to voluntarily move to Philadelphia? And we have an answer.
That was on Saturday night.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Agenda item number six is the Citizens Forum. We have 20 minutes allotted for registered speakers, and also 20 minutes allotted for anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item. We do have three registered speakers this evening. The first is Hannah Turlish.
Turn this around.
Yeah, do you want to turn?
I'm sorry, let me turn it around.
Yeah, I think it was my turn.
It's heavy.
Larry has to come back every month to do this. Not going to tell him how to do this.
What it is, is all the wires come out of the ground onto a swivel plate.
That's me. Thank you. Thanks.
So, if you could just introduce yourself and your address?
Sure.
Thank you. And try to limit your comments to two minutes, if you would, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
I'm sorry, three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. I can do that. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight and for all the good work that you do for our Township. My name is Hannah Turlish. I live at 412 Mill Road in Havertown, and I am running to be the next Seventh Ward Commissioner. I speak tonight about a vital issue for the working families of this Township, and it is at the forefront of my mind because of an experience that I had with hundreds of other parents last week. Registration for the 2019-2020 school year for after-school care at Haverford Township's five elementary schools opened at 9:30 a.m. last Monday. I have a son in first grade at Chestnut Pond Elementary, and I knew from previous experience that we would not get a spot if I did not line up early. I arrived at the Family Support Services offices at 8:15, and I was about 20th in line. After a very cold hour and 15-minute wait, the line began to move. There were hundreds, approximately 300 by my site estimate, hundreds of moms and dads behind me, all with visible signs of stress and worry on their faces. And most of them, like me, had taken time away from work so that their kids would be eligible for before or after care, which is a necessary part of childcare in any household with two working parents. I share this story to frame a commendation and a request. I commend the work that this group has done with the school board, connecting and seeking ways to form a collaborative relationship to maintain and further improve the excellent education that our schools provide. I also request that this group be forward-thinking about the need for quality and affordable before and after-school care for elementary-age children. Starting conversations with stakeholders to brainstorm and problem-solve would be a great first step to address an issue that is getting more and more stressful for families with each passing year. With citizen engagement and partnership with the school board, I am hopeful that this group of hard-working Commissioners can help to generate innovative, excuse me, innovative ideas for the future. I would be happy to share further thoughts and to help problem-solve with fellow residents, you as Commissioners, and the school board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next is Jane Hall, former Third Ward Commissioner.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Ladies, thank you, all of you. I just came tonight for a couple of moments just to share my sentiments and thanks to Larry Gentile and to Doc. I had the distinct privilege and pleasure of working with Larry Gentile when I was Commissioner. I had no idea the complicated and intricate details of running a municipality. I thank you for your service to this community. I thank you for your kindness and caring and consistency with me when I was starting and knew nothing, and called you endlessly, and Amy, and everybody else, Lori too, especially. I'd like to thank you for your guidance when I was Commissioner, especially during the U.S. Open. I'd like to thank you for your guidance when I had some moments that were not that pleasurable as a Commissioner, and I always knew that I could count on you. I felt like you always listened to my questions. You never thought anything I asked you was unnecessary or uncalled-for, and you always gave me great answers. I also appreciate your passion, particularly when we were in executive session and you said something really needed to be addressed. I found it fascinating to look around the room at all the reactions when our fearless leader would walk in fearless, literally would walk in fearless, and give us all of that, just very important information. I found it fascinating to see, look around the room at all the reactions when our fearless leader would walk in fearless, literally would walk in fearless, and give us all of that, just very important information in order to make educated decisions. You care deeply about this township, and you've worked every day toward making this township better. You, from a very, very detailed budget every year, to one of my very favorite things, beautification. And I will tell you, Larry, that there is not a morning that I drive past the intersection of Haverford and Ardmore Avenue, which I do every day to work, that I do not look at that Charlie Brown tree and think of you. And I appreciate it truly from the bottom of my heart. There is not a day that I take people out and tour this township, that I don't tell them about the 35 years that I've lived here and how far it's come. And a lot of that has to do with you and your staff, and the Board of Commissioners, and so much, all the good things that have happened over the last decade-plus. Your passion has always inspired me, it always will. Most of all, I think that we all come into positions and we hope that we can dedicate ourselves and do something really, really good, and walk away leaving something better than when we arrived. That's always our goal. You have certainly done that in many, many ways, and with just superstar quality, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So thank you. I wish you all the best with your family. Have a beautiful family. Enjoy every moment, and know that we appreciate everything you've done for this township. I'd like to say just a couple words about Doc. I know he's not here.
No, he's in the back.
Is he, Doc?
Or he's in the back.
I just have to tell you that you've been amazing. You again, like so many in this township, treated me with such respect and kindness when I was Commissioner and since. And whenever I've called you about anything, you've always, always answered and been right there and done everything for me, from, you know, can you replace the stop sign, to telling me, you know, the details about some wiring last year, when I called him from a real estate project where I really needed to understand something about some PICO wiring. I thank you for everything you've done and your kindness toward me and to all of us in this township, and your dedication has just been unbelievable. I'd also like to tell your team, although they've left, that, you know, we do wake up in the middle of the night, and we do hear those snowplows, and we thank those guys for being there. And when I see them, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday morning, doing all that really heavy lifting, and, and they wave to all of us, you know, that's really unbelievable dedication to our community. So that's from your leadership, and I thank you. And I have to tell you one quick story before I say goodbye. When I first moved here, I was 25 years old, and I went down to our entrance at Marion Golf Manor and started complaining already about things. And the stop sign was crooked, and there was a Public Works guy there, and I pulled over my car and I said, you know, do you think you could straighten that stop sign? It just really bothers me. And he looked at me, he said, lady, if I straightened every stop sign in the township, I'd never get anything done. And I said, okay, I guess that's my answer. So I think things have changed since I was 25 for all of us, and thank you for straightening the stop signs when I asked, and painting the, the street signs when I asked, and all those lovely things that you do. I wish you all the best, both of you, Godspeed, good health, and know that you made a difference in my life, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall.
Third and final registered speaker this evening is Jean Angel.
Hello. My name's Jean Angel, and I'm the Executive Director of Haverford Partnership for Economic Development, or HPD, and this is Don Kelly. He's President of our Board. We ask to speak tonight to thank Larry Gentile and Richard Dougherty for their fine service to Haverford Township and their support of HPD. Larry, I know you don't like to be singled out, but during your tenure, an amazing transformation has occurred in our township. The impact of several huge development projects, Haverford Reserve, the YMCA, the Quarry Center, and the new township building cannot be overstated. You've also sought and received numerous state grants to revitalize many of our older business districts with new lighting and sidewalks, as well as improvements to our parking lots. You've initiated several gardens along Darby Road and Westchester Pike that really brighten up the township. And you've supported other initiatives such as tree tenders and the rain garden and Haverford Green programs. Finally, you've been instrumental in HPD's partnership with the township and in the success of our work over the past several years. Since I've been working for HPD, you have supported our work and treated me with kindness and respect. Your support, that seems like a common theme. Your support for our projects to improve our public spaces, the planters, the gardens, signage, fountains, and most recently, the walkway, has been much appreciated. For those that don't know, we dedicated the fountain in the Triangle Garden to Larry last year, and we installed a plaque to that effect. Your work has significantly enhanced the economic vitality and the quality of life in our community. All of us at HPD are grateful for your service and proud of everything you've accomplished. We hope you enjoy your well-deserved retirement. Please accept this gift as a token of our thanks.
Go get your, go get your keys, Larry. Your new car.
Thank you. I'm going to flip around. Should I flip this around or just flip myself around to talk to Don?
Come on up.
Come on up, Doc. Got one more, one more thing to endure.
You don't have to come.
You sit up here.
Yeah, just sit on the, just sit yourself up. Doc, you and I have worked closely on many projects over the years, and your support has been invaluable. As coordinator of the tree tender program, over the past 10 years, I've relied on Public Works to pick up the trees, dig holes, make PA1 calls, and field phone calls from residents. Numerous HPD projects have also required your support, including placing over 90 planters, some of which weigh hundreds of pounds each. You've also managed the installation of the race gardens and the median planters on Darby Road, picked up and delivered materials for us, installed benches, trashcans, and signs. Throughout these past 10 years, you've been a pleasure to work with. In all that time, you never gave me a hard time. You're always cheerful, and I never once heard you say a bad word about anyone, although a couple of times you did confide in me, Jean, I hate trees. We hope you enjoy your well-deserved retirement. I'm glad to hear that you want to stay active in the community by volunteering with the Historical Society. I'm sure that they can keep you busy, but now that you're no longer responsible for tree care in the township, I'm hoping I can convert you to be a tree tender as well. I'll let you know when the next tree planting is. Thank you again for your kindness and generosity, and also for your support of HPD. Use this gift to celebrate a lifetime of excellent work. community, enhancing economic growth in the township, and his support of HPD as he's recently stepped down from our Board. Mario brings passion, commitment, a knack of getting things done, and a willingness to get his hands dirty to every project that he works on. I worked closely with Mario on the Leonard Crossing Park project, and I could not have done it without his immense help. Next, he and I co-founded the Haverford Tree Tender Program in 2009. Mario suggested that we set the lofty goal of planting 1,000 trees, which seemed like a monumental task. At this time, we've planted over 1,400. Mario was instrumental in the development of Freedom Playground, taking a week off from work to serve as build captain. He's been a consistent volunteer at events in the township, from the music festival to Touch a Truck, from Home, from the Home and Garden Show to the Heritage Festival. He's worked on roofing the federal school, on trail building, on park improvements, and on planting projects in the business districts. In addition, Mario was the driving force in forging an effective partnership between HPD and the township. During Mario's tenure as Board Member, HPD has become a healthy and strong nonprofit organization that's making a positive difference in the township. We could not have done this without Mario's advocacy and leadership. He's been a very active Board Member, serving on the Home and Garden Show Committee and heading the streetscaping initiatives. Mario, thank you so much for your service to HPD and to the township as a whole. Please accept this as a thank you for your work. Do you want to read that?
This certificate of recognition is presented to Mario Oliva. Haverford Partnership for Economic Development recognizes Mario Oliva for his work as a Commissioner, community volunteer, and HPD Board Member, which has impacted the quality of life and economic development of Haverford Township in meaningful and significant ways. His passion, hard work, and dedication to his community over the past 10 years has been exceptional. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you, Don.
Who's going to be giving you this?
He's not used to that.
I'm sorry, I'm just very surprised. Very, very surprised.
Well deserved.
Wow. I'm really surprised, I don't know what to say. Thank you, guys. I really, it was, I, I enjoy, I don't know which way to go here. I really enjoyed working with Jean and with Don and with the whole group. Had a lot of fun. Things have changed a little bit, so I needed to step down, so I wanted, I, I still support the HPD and what you guys do, and I thank you so much for this. I can't, I really can't thank you enough. I'm just, I don't know what to say. I'm just very, very surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to address Hannah Turlish's comments, I actually had, my wife and I had the same experience at Cooper Town this past year, when our daughter, who's in fifth grade, did not get in the early program before school. So I end up being with her for the first hour until an opening did occur about a month later. So I share your frustration, and I think it's a frustration of a lot of parents. You know, my, when I was looking at it from a parent's perspective, I was, my question was why FSS and Elwin, which are the preschool program for our school district, why they're not expanding the program within the schools and simply just adding additional room or adding an additional staff member? It just seems like that's the easy thing to do, and it's better to have those kind of programs at the school, I think, than rather than in a secondary location. So we certainly can do things with zoning. It is allowed institutional zoning, an accessory use in a school or a church, and it's also allowed in a C2 commercial district. We can look at possibly expanding that into other commercial districts. You know, it seems to me that the, that the, that if there is a demand, the, that somebody should step forward and satisfy that demand somehow. But I think the first, the first partner should be the school district, and we'd be happy to partner with them in any way we can to make, you know, childcare more, and early childhood education opportunities available to as many kids as possible. So we'll certainly do our best to aid, to aid in that regard. So thank you for your comments. Jane, Jane Hall, well articulated and couldn't say, couldn't say it any better, and certainly well-deserved comments to both Doc and to Larry. And to Jean Angel and Don, thank you for your recognition of Larry and Doc and Mario as well. So we appreciate, appreciate it very much. So thanks for being here.
So now we'll turn our attention to continuation of the Citizens Forum. We have 20 minutes allotted for anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item. If it's not agenda-related, we'll have an opportunity to do that later. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the agenda item? Okay, thank you. I'll now turn to item number seven, the approval of amendments.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 11, 2019.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McGarrity. Any questions or discussions or edits? Very none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Ayes, carry. Thank you. Item number eight, approval of the warrants. Commissioner, Vice President Holmes.
Mr. President, thank you. I move that we approve warrant number three of 2019 totaling $3,183,314.37, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for February 21, 2019, in the amount of $716,802.77. General sewer fund payroll for March 7, 2019, in the amount of $657,691.57. General fund dispersment's number three of 2019, in the amount of $138,612.72. Sewer fund dispersment number three of 2019, in the amount of $581,447.20. Community development block grant fund dispersment number three of 2019, in the amount of $91,167.09. Capital project fund dispersment number three of 2019, in the amount of $90,775.90. And the credit card statement ending February 27, 2019, in the amount of $6,817.12.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion?
Well, as we heard secondhand, Mr. Anderson has been through these warrants, and any questions that he's raised have been answered to his satisfaction. He has recommended that these warrants be approved, as do I, and that's all I have.
Just have a voice vote. Hall in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Ayes, carry. Thank you. Item number nine, ordinance number P5, 2019, Property Maintenance Code, second reading.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P5, 2019, amending and supplementing Chapter 58, Building Construction, Article 1, Building Code, Section 58-2, Paragraph B, additions, deletions, and modifications, and Article 2, Property Maintenance Code, Section 58-3, Paragraph A, adoption of standards, modification of standards.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Hart.
Second reading, Mr. Sillia was here last week and explained, we're catching up to the national and state building codes by updating our codes.
Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item number 10, ordinance number P6, 2019, traffic, first reading.
A motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P6, 2019, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Sticker, parking only. It says, amendy, sticker, parking only, which currently restricts parking on the west side of Beverly Road between Mill Road and Goff Road on school days 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. To read Beverly Road, west side, between Mill Road and Goff Road, school days 7 a.m. to 10 a.m., valid permit exempt. And E is Park Road, south side, between Darby Road and Lansdowne Road, residential parking only.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda item number 11, Resolution Number 2126-2019, preliminary, final, minor subdivision 217 Walnut Hill Lane.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2126, 2019, the preliminary slash final minor subdivision plan for Fredador Penn LLC, the property located at 217 Walnut Hill Lane, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio Number 22-09-02562-00, has been submitted to permit the subdivision of the existing 21,050 square foot lot to create two lots as follows. Lot 1 containing 7,500 square feet, Lot 2 containing 14,750 square feet. Per the zoning hearing board case Z-18-31, the applicant has received a variance on the saw yard setback requirements for Lot 1. The subject properties zone R4, Loaded Medium Residential District, as located in the first ward. The opposite plans were prepared by Herbert McComby?
McCombi.
McCombi, Jr., PE Consulting Engineers and Surveyors Incorporated, Brumel, PA, dated September 20, 2018.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrity. Any discussion, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva? Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda item number 12, resolution number 2127-2019, transfer 2018 funds.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2127-2019, authorizing the transfer of 2018 funds.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Any discussion, questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Agenda item number 13, resolution number 2128-2019, preliminary final minor subdivision 1200 Elston Road.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2128-2019, approving the preliminary final minor subdivision plan for Ormond Properties LLC, the applicant, for the property located at 1200 Elston Road, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio Number 22-09-00730-00, has been submitted to permit the subdivision of the existing 15,878 square foot parcel to create two lots as follows: Lot 1 is proposed to be 9,723 square feet, and Lot 2 is proposed to be 6,154 square feet. The existing dwelling and associated walkways on Lot 1 are proposed to remain, and a new single-family dwelling is proposed for Lot 2. Additionally, four new parking spaces are proposed for Lot 1. A seepage bed is proposed on each lot for stormwater management. The subject property is zoned R4, low to medium residential, and is located in the ninth ward. The afferset plans were prepared by Catania Engineering Associates, Millamont Park, Pennsylvania, dated October 2, 2018, and last revised February 8, 2019, subject to compliance with the planning commission recommendations.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Agenda item number 14, resolution number 2129-2019, preliminary final minor subdivision for 1417 Fairview Avenue.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2129-2019, approving the preliminary final minor subdivision plan for Ormond Properties LLC, the applicant, for the property located at 1417 Fairview Avenue, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio Number 22-09-00877-00, has been submitted to permit the subdivision of the existing 42,000 square foot parcel to create two lots as follows: Lot 1 is proposed to be 25,000, 25,500 square feet, and Lot 2 is proposed to be 16,500 square feet. The existing dwelling, garage, and driveway are proposed to be demolished, and a new single-family dwelling on each lot is proposed. A seepage bed is proposed on each lot for stormwater management. The subject property is zoned R4, low to medium residential, and is located in the ninth ward. The afferset plans were prepared by Catania Engineering Associates, Millamont Park, Pennsylvania, dated November 27, 2018, and last revised February 13, 2019, subject to compliance with the planning commission recommendations.
Seconded. Again, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Agenda item number 15, we have two purchases to consider, both of which are going to help reduce our carbon footprint, and both were initiated by our environmental advisory committee in conjunction with our staff, and we thank them for their hard work and efforts, and the first item for consideration is the stadium.
Mr. President, a motion to authorize the purchase and installation of 55 new LED high bay luminar with wire guard light fixtures at the stadium from Miller Lighting and Energy Incorporated, Newtown, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $19,975. Cost will be further offset with an anticipated PICO energy rebate in the amount of $4,125 for a net cost of $15,850.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner McGarretty. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
McGarretty?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Agenda item number 16 is appointments to the senior citizens advisory board in Ward 1, Mr. D'Amelio, and Ward 8, Commissioner Hart.
I'm going to have to table mine, please.
Your, Commissioner Hart?
Point Elias Cohen.
I'm sorry?
Elias Cohen.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Also, under agenda item number 16 is shade tree commission, we did have a resignation, so we have, and to fill an unexpired five-year term. There were two candidates that we interviewed, and it's up to the board whether we want to put these names forward or table. Two names, we, resumes were in your packet, the work session packet last week.
Mr. President, a motion to appoint Ryan Herlinger to fill an unexpired five-year term on the shade tree commission prior December 31, 2022.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Holmes.
I apologize, could you re-
Ryan Herlinger.
H-E-R-L-I-N-G-E-R.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, seconded?
I did.
Yeah. Are there any other nominations?
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close, I have a second motion to close.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, please call the roll.
Ryan Herlinger?
Thank you.
Ryan Herlinger.
Ryan Herlinger.
Mr. Siegel?
Ryan Herlinger.
Mr. McGarretty?
I told you.
Dr. Hart?
Ryan Herlinger.
Mr. Wexler?
Ryan Herlinger.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Herlinger.
And Mr. Lewis? Mr. Herlinger as well. Congratulations to Mr. Herlinger. Item number 17 is continuation of the Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any non-agenda item? Okay, see none, new business, any new business, or do we want to go to, you want to do your presentation under new business, or other business that really matters?
Other business.
Okay, other business, okay, any new business? Okay, under other business, Commissioner D'Amelio, I think Commissioner Siegel want to give us an update on the Route 3 Westchester Pike order project?
Yeah, for purposes of clarity, I think it is worth noting, new business implies that we would present and act on something, whereas I think presentations like this belong in other presentations.
Sure.
As many of you know, this is a process that started, I think, a couple of years ago, maybe even over a year and a half ago, when Commissioner Siegel and I attended Marple Township's Planning Commission meeting regarding the development of Westchester Pike and 476. Oh, thank you. Can't leave. Wait a minute, oh yeah. So, when we, when we attended that meeting, we discovered the magnitude of the project and the effect it was, it's going to have on Haverford Township and the traffic in the first, and the fourth, and the second ward specifically. As many of you know, in the mornings, how, how bad the traffic backs up, and nothing's been done along that, along that corridor, except for trying to calm the traffic with adapters for the lights. We've had several meetings, and we had one as recently as Thursday, wasn't it? This Friday, with the state representative, state senator Dale Leach, state representative Mike Zabel was there, as long as, as well as state representative Greg Vitale, members of PennDOT, Dave Pinone, the police, Public Works, and Larry Gentile.
And Tony Hamad, from Marple.
And Tony Hamad, that's right, Tony was there, the township manager from Marple, and I'm going to pass this on to Dan to review what we discussed there.
Yeah, what we, what we did, and what we've created here, is Mr. Pinone had done the mock-up, and in fact, although this is going to be a PennDOT project, the township has taken the lead, we've actually authorized Mr. Pinone to do the work, to diagram what is the proposed reconstruction of the Blue Route interchange with Lawrence Road. This drawing over here, where the photograph, shows the proposed revisions, which would create a dedicated on-ramp or a lane onto the Blue Route going north without having to stop at Lawrence Road, redirect the traffic, and the engineers, the police, all believe that this will help relieve a lot of the stress, it won't fix it all, and it says it's the first phase, or the short-term improvements. The next step will be to again request in the state budget for next year, and this time, the, the estimate is only $3 million, but a $3 million allocation to perform this roadwork, which you could see creates the additional dedicated lane onto the Blue Route, moves the traffic from South Lawrence Road, which is the Marple portion, onto a newly-created ramp further, just slightly further west on Westchester Pike, but it would really help alleviate the stress because of the environmental factors, everything that's impacted by this. So, we will have another meeting, but, you know, literally everyone was at this meeting, we also had Delaware County Planning Commission, it, it was well-attended and very productive.
Yeah, I just, just want to add, so when you're coming down Westchester Pike, it will continually feed right onto the Blue Route going northbound out towards Plymouth Meeting, so the traffic was normally backs up, because of that, will now continuously flow right on, onto Plymouth Meeting, because that's a dedicated lane, it will constantly flow out, and so we're hoping that that will take care of the problem, coming, you know, the traffic backing up as far as Manoa Road on some days.
One other thing about that project, I mean, once you get into that lane, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, you cannot get out, so once you're going on the 476, there's no merging, you can't merge in, and you can't merge out as they do now, you can't do that, but a little bit past that, there's going to be another on-ramp, sort of, with a yield there, so if you miss that exit, there is another one, which Commissioner Oliva's going to point out.
This is the dedicated lane, there'll be a Jersey barrier here, the cement barriers will be, will be along here, going up to Lawrence Road, and then you'll have a, you'll have a, so when the traffic's coming out of Lawrence Road, coming down from Brumal, you're going to come out, and then instead of going onto this ramp, you will continue down and go onto this ramp here. Also, anybody who doesn't make it into this lane can still go into this lane here and make it back onto the northbound.
It's up to the governor to get us some money, and we're hoping that he does. Dave, you want to add anything to this, are we missing anything?
No, no, I think you covered it pretty good.
And when did they say our next meeting is? I think it's about a month, maybe, or six weeks, we're going to meet again. I think they're still lobbying the state, they're still lobbying the governor, the budget's coming up, and so that's one of the reasons why we're pushing for this rather quickly, because the budget's coming up. I think they, they informed us they have to finalize the budget the end of April, Dan, is that right?
June.
June, thank you, June.
June 30.
June 30, so we're moving, we're trying to move fast with this, so.
As Dale will put it, they'll get serious around 26.
Yes, thank you. Anything else with you, Larry, when you leave?
Thanks for that, Andy.
Thank you, commissioners. So now I'll turn to individual commissioner updates, Commissioner D'Amelio.
I just want to, a couple of things, to thank everyone who attended the first ward meeting in February, well-attended meeting, and thanks to Mike, state representative Mike Zabel, that attended the meeting as well, it was very gracious of him to attend, and thank you to Larry Gentile, who attended his last first ward committee meeting, and thank you to the police for showing up as well, and providing updates on what had occurred in February with the shooting in Westgate, and I thank you for taking the time out to answer many of the residents' questions, they certainly appreciate it, I've received a lot of emails saying how much they thanked you guys for being there. Larry, I don't know what to say, I'm going to miss you tremendously, you've been such a big help, I mean, there's, really, I can't reiterate with what everyone said about you, but you've been such a huge help to me in the first ward, and it was a pleasure knowing you, I got to know you from the day I started getting involved in the township, I recognized quickly your leadership ability, how, how well you were respected in, in the paramedic program when you ran that, how well you ran that, just your organizational skills, your dedication, it, I just, I'm in awe of you, and, and I don't say things unless I mean them, I am going to really, really miss you tremendously, I, I want to thank Doc as well, I mean, he was a tremendous help to, to all of us, and, and did, made the Public Works Department so much better than what it is or was, and I agree with what former Commissioner Jane Hall said about the, the stop sign, I had similar issues, and it's certainly not that way today, but, and we've lost some good people here, but we have good people in the township, and we, we hope to have, recruit more good people, and we'll see what happens, we'll be calling Amy on her cell phone, ma'am.
What cell phone?
Are you available on Sundays, by the way?
No, no, she's not.
Anyway, thank you, Larry, and, and I wish you all the best that life has to offer, you deserve it, you and your family deserve it, so thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
So, I, I too want to, first of all, I want to thank the HPD for, for this award, I was not expecting anything tonight, but I really do appreciate it, Gene, Don, rest of the board, and Jane Hall, who got involved, and, and the other commissioners here who have supported a lot of the initiatives that, that Gene talked about, so thank you very much, and, and I was just glad to be part of, of what we did there. As for Larry, I, I really don't know what to say. Over the years, he's been not just a resource for us, but he has been a friend, a guy who I really would, who would tell me the truth when I was wrong, when I was, when I was going a little too far, would put me in my place, and would, you know, did the right thing for the township. He really is a hard-working individual who cares so much about, about what he does, and about the people in the township, and about doing a good job. The, the amount of time he spent, nights, weekends, you know, in certain situations, you would call him late or on the weekends, and he would always respond very quickly, and take care of whatever was going on, you know, whatever we, we would have going on, so I really- So, thank you very much, and I was just glad to be part of what we did there. As for Larry, I really don't know what to say. Over the years, he's been not just a resource for us, but he has been a friend, a guy who I really would, who would tell me the truth when I was wrong, when I was going a little too far, would put me in my place, and would, you know, did the right thing for the Township. He really is a hard-working individual who cares so much about what he does, and about the people in the Township, and about doing a good job. The amount of time he spent, nights, weekends, you know, in certain situations, you would call him late or on the weekends, and he would always respond very quickly and take care of whatever was going on, you know, whatever we would have going on. So, I really appreciate everything you did for this Township. You really are not just a hard-working guy, but just a good person, really just a good person who really cares about people. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Amy, I'm glad, glad you're here.
We have your seat.
And I'm glad you'll be the, you know, you're going to stay on as, you'll be the manager for the next couple of months, until the new manager comes on. So, really appreciate all your hard work in the whole process of steering us in the right direction for our new manager and your work. I mean, you've really gone above and beyond what our expectations were for you. As for Doc, Doc has been incredible over the years, anything. You know, in the middle of the night, snow, somebody calls, I got snow here, snow there, we need to get this done, and Doc would take care of it. Just never worried about Public Works at all. He really had everything under control there, has just put people in place around him, and now, he's leaving, and Danny's going to take his place, and he's going to do a great job. He really, Doc surrounded himself with some really good people down there, so. Did a great job, and not just during his tenure, but for a long time, we're going to feel the effects of Doc and his good work. So, with that, I...
Just briefly before, I echo some of the comments of my colleagues. We were unfortunately snowed out last month with the scheduled PennDOT meeting that we had regarding the construction of the Ardmore Avenue Bridge. We have gotten all the participants together, and we have a rescheduled date of April 10th at 7:00 in this room. It's a Wednesday night. PennDOT will be here, all the same participants, the police will be here, myself, Commissioner Segal, and Commissioner Lewis, and I guess Larry will not be here, but, you know, we'll have representatives from the Township present, answer any questions. And hopefully, we'll get some more insight from PennDOT as to the process that they're going to take, the expectations of time, and detours, which I'm sure many people are interested in. Another event, I just wanted to plug, tickets are on sale for HADA, Havreford Alliance for Drug Awareness's annual comedy fundraiser. It takes place at the Trinity Christian Church on Mill Road. It's on April 13th at 7:00, and this year, they're stepping up a little bit, and it'll feature Joe Conklin and...
Dot com.
What?
Dot com.
Joe Conklin.
Joe Conklin, dot com.
Well, the person will be there, but, yeah. And the city all-stars of comedy. So, it's a nice, it's a nice night, good fundraiser for a good cause, and hopefully you can make it. And just allow me briefly to echo comments of many here. Larry, on behalf of myself and residents of the third ward and Harrefor Township in general, thank you for all the hard work that you've put in over many years. One thing I was thinking about, what to say tonight, Doc and Larry both shared two qualities that I think have shown through, both throughout the town and just in the experience that I've had on this board, and that's, they both shared the quality that they cared deeply about Harrefor Township, and they both had immense pride in the work that they did. They were not in it for accolades, they were in it to make sure that they did a job well-done, and they were doing a job well-done for the community that they cared about. And we are grateful for that, and we will certainly miss it.
Thank you, Giv. Mr. Segal?
Thank you. First, just some dates. The Paddock Farm Civic Association Annual Meeting will be on March 14th at J.D. McGillicuddy's at 7:30. Commissioner McCloskey, Commissioner Hart, and I will be holding our joint constituent meeting in this room, March 20th, that's next Wednesday, at 7:00 p.m. Turning to Doc and Larry, what Doc said really embodies what both Larry and Doc did and their staffs. When, if you ever come to a constituent meeting, you'll hear me say that I look good or we look good only because the staff makes us look good, whether it's the administration, Public Works, everyone says we have the best services around, the police, you know, we have an incredibly professional force. That all is because of the leadership of Larry, Doc, and others, and that's a hugely important factor, because while Larry can be a little heated, generally speaking, his leadership is...
Did you say Larry's heated?
Yes.
Oh, man. I said he can be.
I still have two weeks to discipline them over there, don't you?
But, the reality is that, you know, you have always handled your role in a manner that is respectful and seeks to address issues. You and I first met when I raised a complaint, long before I had any inkling I would ever be running, let alone being on this board, in 2007. And you immediately recognized that there was a mistake or an oversight. It was corrected, and it led me to respect you greatly for how you handled it, and I've handled similar issues since then, and we're talking about 12 years now that I've worked with you. Then I joined this board. I came on at an odd, unusual time, where I was new, in the middle of a year, and you shepherded me through the early months, so I knew what was happening, what I could expect, and allowed me to feel like I was part of the board and part of the Township. And I thank you for that, and you've continued. You do that with me, or Jane, or anyone who's new, and it's something that's important, because coming up to this board, you don't realize what you're encountering, whether it's the, you know, the inevitable complaints, you know, when are we going to pave Eagle Road, or the issues that come up on a daily basis with someone didn't pick up my trash, or they stole my recycling can, you name it. You, Doc, have always been there, and you've supported us, and you've, you know, helped me and made me look good, because if you're not there to support me, or the police, or Public Works, we can't do it. And that's a quality of leadership that's very important, and not always easy when you have demanding residents and others. So, I thank you, I thank Doc, and I thank all of the staff. You know, we have a superb staff, and you insisted on that, and it shows in our finances, it shows in every aspect of how this Township has grown and has really put itself on the map. So, I thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. McGary?
Okay, well, Larry and Doc, I'm not going to say anymore, I said it all out there. Larry's been great to places like Nyter Hall, the Grange Estate, the library, I mean, he's done a lot, funded a lot of money, sent it their way, and that's why we're successful today in Harrefor Township. Certainly, they're going to be a hard act to follow because of the work that they put in, and their heart was in Harrefor Township. Other than that, now, I want to say that Tyler Technologies, what Dan Segal was talking about earlier, are the people working for the people media about your reassessments. They sent this letter out, and basically, on the letter, I want to read one thing they do say here, is after you read the parts of what they say you have, it says, "You need not reply if information is correct." Just so everybody knows that, if the info's correct, you need not reply and send us back in. So, that's basically, that's all I have to say. Oh, wait a minute, the Kevin Kane, because of our next regular Commissioners' meeting, it'll be, Kevin Kane will be after that. So, that is the week before Easter. It's on April the 7th. Kevin Kane cancer run will be at Annunciation Church starting at 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Larry and Doc, as the new guy on the block, I can echo Jane Hall's words. I really made the transition for me very helpful. I really appreciate everything you did, how you've been helping, not that there's not more to be done. And I appreciate your passion for the Township and Doc's as well. I mean, you're just tremendously committed, and it shows.
Thank you, Dan Hart.
Just briefly, I just echo that we, the third, fourth, and eighth ward meeting is, will be a week from Wednesday, March 20th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Township Building. And for all those who celebrate St. Patrick's Day Sunday, have a great day.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Wexler?
And from the ninth ward, we'll do this, the public service announcement first. On Sunday, April 7th, at 12:30 at the Bonheur Fire Hall, Hilltop Civic Association will have their annual Easter egg hunt. It's a limited event, so please go on their website, hilltopcivic.org, and register for that. It's always a great event, usually have a couple of hundred, maybe three, four hundred kids, and it's just a, it's just a great event. I'll just add my comments about Larry and Doc as well. Everybody said they're sad to see you go. I'm happy for you. I'm happy that you're going to be able to retire. I'm happy that you're getting out. You're young enough to enjoy it, enjoy your grandchildren. And the reason I'm not sad is I look at you two guys, you're the best leaders that I've seen here in the Township for a number of years, and the true mark of leadership is how you develop the people coming from behind you. It's a very unselfish way to go. It's extremely evident with Doc, with all the supervisor he, supervisors he has down there. When Terry Heenan left, I thought we were going to take a big hit on the tree group, but the next guy stepped right in, he was trained by Doc, and we didn't miss a beat. I think Amy's going to be a great interim Township manager until we hire a new one. I'm disappointed that she didn't want to take the job, but she's probably smarter than we all knew.
She's going to be here 40 more years, maybe she'll get another shot at it.
But, but really, the true mark of a leader is how you prepare those other people. You have two vastly different styles of leadership. I don't think I've ever heard Doc use a curse word, but I admire your tenacity in trying not to use one in a sentence. So, but you've prepared everybody behind you to take over. I don't think, you know, we'll, we'll miss a step, but we're not going to miss a beat because, because of your leadership and what you've trained the others to do. So, I wish you good luck and happy retirement. I know Terry's got a lot of plans for Doc, I'm sure your wife and grandchildren got a lot of plans for you. So, go enjoy them. We're just passing through, but I'm happy for you, so, good luck.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Commissioner Holmes?
First, Skadium had a very successful event this weekend, well-received, a terrific regional, and really, the whole Eastern Seaboard competition in figure skating at the, at the Skadium Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and by all measures, I understand, it was a, it was a big success, and certainly showed off the Township well. Anybody who's known me for all these years on this board knows how hard I've tried to get to the center of this table. The drawback to that is I have to come up with something about these guys now that everybody hasn't already said, and Jane stole most of what I was going to say. But I would say this about, well, first of all, Amy, a lot of us are happy that you're taking over acting Township Manager. Nobody more happier than our auditors, our bond insurers, or the entire public market. So, I just want to say thank you for stepping up for the temporary role that you're going to be playing. It thwarts my, my goal, of course, which was, I couldn't get rid of Larry soon enough because I was really looking forward to having a Township Manager that I could boss around, but that, that's not going to happen now or in the future. Doc's, Doc's work in the Public Works Department, it just in my short time in Harrefor Township, so significantly changed the delivery of services to our people. And the best way that I could describe it is the way that a professional athlete can make their sport look so easy to somebody who doesn't have any idea what's really involved in doing it. And the delivery of Township services became seamless, it became matter-of-fact, and you only have to spend one morning watching, let alone maybe accompanying, the guys in Public Works and the work they have to do, the people of Public Works. Recognize how hard that is, and while at the same time, they're doing that incredibly physically demanding job, they are dealing with people who aren't always as appreciative as they should be of the work that's being provided on their behalf. Doc really professionalized, took great pride, as people said, in the work that the Public Works Department did. He obviously shared that pride with the people who worked for him, who were proud to work for him, and as he made very clear to us, he was proud to be somebody who was called their leader. So, it's really just great to have Doc as long as we did, and I am sad to see him go, but I do know that we're going to stay in good hands. Larry, just today, I called Larry about something, and Larry said, is, after I finished 22 things I asked him, he said, "Is that, is that all you need?" He said, "That's easy." And then I thought, geez, I should have asked Larry for a lot more of these years, because he just, Larry, I will, I will miss having you here in the Township, and I will say this, say this from the bottom of my heart, the, we are, we are measured at the end of our lives as to whether or not the world is a better place for us having been in it. And that can be a very cold and sterile question asked, and you can be satisfied knowing right now that your, that your work here made this Township and made the world a better place. It has been my privilege to, to work with you and to call you our Township Manager, and I hope we can ever be half as lucky as we were for these years under your leadership. So, thank you very much for your dedication to everybody in this town. It was obvious to, to everybody who lived in this town that there was a new pride in the delivery of our services, and at the helm, somebody very proud to do it. So, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
I would just like to follow up on an issue I raised at last month's meeting with regard to the Ardmore Avenue Bridge reconstruction project, and Commissioner McCloskey and Commissioner Segal and I will be hosting a public meeting, but one of the outcomes of the pre-construction meeting that I attended was the discovery that the intersection of Harrefor Road and Ardmore Avenue would not be upgraded. And my assumption all along was that it would be, that it was part of the project, and PennDOT did not include that as part of the project. So, that means no adaptive traffic signal, that means no upgrading of the pedestrian crosswalks. These are things I think that need to be done at that intersection, and it makes perfect sense that they be done simultaneous with the bridge closing. So, I think with Commissioner Segal and Commissioner McCloskey and I will be working, I've already reached out to Commissioner, I mean, to State Representative Vitale and Senator Leach, and will also be trying to reach the PennDOT Secretary about this issue like we did with the sidewalk on College Avenue. She intervened on our behalf, and we got a sidewalk. But I think we need to press upon PennDOT the importance of upgrading that intersection completely, because there are a lot of people that use that intersection to cross to access the Narsetown High Speed Line. So, I think we all have to work collectively to put, apply the appropriate amount of pressure on PennDOT to do that work, and I know in working, talking with Larry, that we are going to apply, or have applied, or Dave's going to apply for an adaptive traffic signal for that intersection. So, hopefully, we can get PennDOT and the support of our police to, to go forward and press to get the crosswalks and the proper signaling there for crosswalks as well, so. So, there's not much I can add to what's been said about Larry. Do you have a big head, Larry? I don't know. You might tonight, after tonight. One of the quotes, I'm just looking on the internet, is, one of the quotes is, "Some people are indispensable, but no one is irreplaceable." I have to say, Larry, you come pretty darn close. So, anyway, so, thank you for your service, Larry. I'd like the Commissioner Jane Hall's comment about being fearless, and he certainly is fearless. He would be quick to tell you when he didn't think you were right, and he always had the interest of the taxpayers at heart, so, thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Is there any other business? Any other comments that anybody else wants to make?
What happened here?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, from the bottom of my heart, for all the kind words. The next two weeks, I'll be have the opportunity to come and see you personally, so I'm not done this evening. If I were to thank everyone tonight, we'd have enough time. But Chris, thank you for coming tonight. I don't know if too many people know about it, but if it wasn't for Mr. O'Connell, I wouldn't be here, sitting in this position, because back in the year of mid-'70s, Chris convinced me to apply and, for the position here through the CETA program, become a paramedic. Would have thought that I would end up as a Township Manager, and I had the pleasure of working next to Chris in many capacities, but again, I, from the bottom of my heart, for my staff, I'll be seeing, seeing them and doing my personal thank yous, as well as the members of this board. I wouldn't have not, you know, for you allowing me to manage the way I manage and to get these things done, we, you're, you're the reason why I've been successful, so I'll be seeing yous over the next two weeks. Thank you.
So, at the end of each meeting, Larry walks down... So, at the end of each meeting, Larry walks down this aisle and he makes sure that all the chairs are at the right height. So, this'll be your last night, Larry, so, you'll have to...
My...
Can you, can you, can you get over that when you leave? Maybe the chairs won't be at the same height.
I'll be here at this commissioner meeting, in that audience, shaking my hand.
Okay.
Commissioner, he's assigned somebody to do that job for me.
Yeah, you think about who you wanna assign that to, that task. Maybe the commissioners can do it themselves.
Chief's volunteering.
Chief's gonna do it, okay. Well, thank you. Uh, thank you all, and if there's no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.